This meeting of the Norwood City Council is hereby called for order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, through our repentance, as a body we congregate in these council chambers, we pray for the light of my guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal, here. Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sancker.
Here.
Mr. Breeden.
Here.
All members are present. We have several requests to amend the agenda. Under reports of standing committees, we have a committee of the whole report, the first. Second would be a Housing, Health and Public Safety Committee report. And third is a Finance Committee report. We'll also remove ordinance number two, the ordinance to change appropriations. We were advised by our financial advisor not to change appropriations until the Financial Recovery Plan was approved by the Financial Planning Commission, so we will remove them. And then, under Communications, we will add one communication, a letter from council regarding the award of excellence. Those are the proposed. Ms. Stevenson.
I move that we amend the agenda as proposed.
Seconded by Mr. Breeden, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to note that for the appropriations, that we did think that the fiscal recovery plan would have been approved before this meeting, but there was a reschedule to that meeting, so that is why we have to take it off.
That is correct. And there, with the change in leadership, the notification was not sent to the clerk of council's office, to the secretary of council, therefore she was not aware that she needed to post that. And that is, so I notified Ms. Snyder last night about the delinquency of notification. She decided to cancel the meeting this morning. It is rescheduled for April the 3rd. That's, um, is that Mrs. Thompson? April the 3rd at 11:30. I did provide her with a copy of what was passed, so that the commission does have a week to look at it, so I suspect that they will take final action at that time. I also assured Ms. Snyder that I would take responsibility of making sure that the council's office received the notification, because we're not sure when it makes up the third. Yes, Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And I did talk to the Safety Service Director today, and he said that there's nothing dire, urgent in the changes that's going to affect the ability of the city to operate, so we'll be fine passing the appropriations changes at our next regularly scheduled meeting on April 10th.
Good, thank you. So the motion on the floor is to amend the agenda. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no requests to address council on the agenda items, so we will move to reports of standing committees of council. The first is the Committee of the Whole Report dated March 19, 2018. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of the Whole, to whom was referred Fabric Recycling, discussions with the Mayor and Safety Service Director about city issues, and the C-9 Viva Recovery's Health Plan, beg leave to submit the following report. Mr. Bonzal discussed the logistics of fabric recycling and distributed information. The administration will look into the program and make recommendations. Council members posed questions of the Mayor and Safety Service Director and took part in constructive conversation. The retirees' health plan proposal was received, with several changes made. The proposed plan will be submitted to the law department for review prior to further consideration. Respectfully submitted, Donna Lake Chairperson, Mr. Bonzal, Mr. Clark, Mr. Thompson, Ms. Stevenson, Mrs. Hanahan, Mr. Sancker, and Mr. Breeden. Mr. Sancker?
I would recommend that the committee report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal, is there any discussion? I have submitted that to the law department and have not gotten responses yet, that they were grateful for the red lines and the several questions that I asked them. The motion on the floor is to receive and file a report. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is the Housing, Health and Public Safety. Ms. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. Committee report, Housing, Health and Public Safety, Tuesday, March 20, 2018. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Housing, Health and Public Safety, to whom was referred building permits and inspections, beg leave to submit the following report. Mark Reeves from the Building Department and Lisa Humble, Hamilton County Plumbing Director, met with us to discuss permits and inspections. The intent was to inform everyone that inspections and permits are required, and required for the safety of the homeowner. Hamilton County Plumbing inspectors were recently alerted to a home on Ashland Avenue that had been beautifully renovated and scheduled to close on a sale. The plumbing renovations had not been inspected, and Hamilton County had been alerted to this. The property was inspected and issues were discovered that created a health hazard and a dangerous situation. Councilman Clark volunteered to inform realtors to check on inspections before sales. We also discussed a campaign using social media and city banners to alert those purchasing homes to confirm that inspections were completed and to remind the homeowner and renovators that permits and inspections are required. Respectfully submitted, Marilyn Hanahan, Chairperson, John Breeden, Andrew Clark, Joe Sancker.
Mr. Breeden?
I'd like to request that the committee report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is the Finance Committee report. Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Finance Budget and Audit, to whom was referred Norwood Community Television Funding and 2018 Finances, beg leave to submit the following report. We recommend moving all 2018 and future year cable television franchise fee revenue from Cincinnati Bell to the PACE Fund to go to Norwood Community Television. We recommend this city administration for copier contracts pursue their first option, which will save the city about $550 a month and provide, it'll also provide additional copiers. We heard information about a water rate increase and recommend the administration send a letter to council. Respectfully submitted, James Bonzal, Andrew Clark, John Breeden.
Mr. Clark?
Move that the committee report be accepted and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So, we talked about, also talked about a number of other issues as well, that we weren't ready to refer out of committee, just wanted to provide an update. So for the lights on the, the streetlights on the lateral that are, have been out and been out for a while, the city had gotten an estimate, and the estimate that we received was to replace all of the lights there with LED lights, but we're still waiting on cost estimates to actually repair some of the electric lines that are out, so we're still waiting on that. Also, we've asked, or I've asked the city administration to look into what it would take to just allow the state to start maintaining the lateral and not us, because for the $50,000 a year that we get, and all the salt and all the other things that we have to do to it, including this, you know, potentially $70,000 expense to redo the lights, then, you know, I don't know if it's quite worth it for us to continue doing it. So, the Safety Service Director is looking into that, and I'll be following up with him. Also, it was proposed by the Building Commissioner to raise building and zoning fees. They haven't been raised for approximately 15 years, and so they want to raise them 30% now, and the logic is that it's only 2% a year. But we've, we're asking additional questions on that, trying to find out exactly, you know, how does that keep it, does it put us in line with other municipalities? Are we, is it really the right thing to do at the right moment? So, we'll be talking about that at our next meeting. And then, the water rate increase, so there is going to be a water rate increase, and that we talked about in the letter, and the Safety Service Director will send a letter to council at the next meeting, alerting us of that.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor then is to receive and file a committee report. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Move on to the third reading of ordinances. That is an ordinance promoting the citywide street sale May 11th and 12th, 2018, and abating all permit fees associated with the sale, as amended. Mr. Clark?
Move that we have the third reading of this ordinance.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is the Housing, Health and Public Safety. Ms. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. Committee report, Housing, Health and Public Safety, Tuesday, March 20, 2018. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Housing, Health and Public Safety, to whom was referred building permits and inspections, beg leave to submit the following report. Mark Reeves from the Building Department and Lisa Humble, Hamilton County Plumbing Director, met with us to discuss permits and inspections. The intent was to inform everyone that inspections and permits are required, and required for the safety of the homeowner. Hamilton County Plumbing inspectors were recently alerted to a home on Ashland Avenue that had been beautifully renovated and scheduled to close on a sale. The plumbing renovations had not been inspected, and Hamilton County had been alerted to this. The property was inspected and issues were discovered that created a health hazard and a dangerous situation. Councilman Clark volunteered to inform realtors to check on inspections before sales. We also discussed a campaign using social media and city banners to alert those purchasing homes to confirm that inspections were completed and to remind the homeowner and renovators that permits and inspections are required. Respectfully submitted, Marilyn Hanahan, Chairperson, John Breeden, Andrew Clark, Joe Sancker.
Mr. Breeden?
I'd like to request that the committee report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Mr. Clark?
We received a letter from the Treasurer's Office just stating that this will put us in compliance with state law. I guess this was passed a time ago, but there was kind of, there was some litigation in court cases going on, so they thought at this time this needed to be passed to get us updated with the state.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there any other discussion? Motion on the floor then is to suspend the rules. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance amending the Norwood Tax Code, Ordinance 1-2018, Sections 182.03-F4 and 182.05-S to comply with state law and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending the Norwood Tax Code, Ordinance 1-2018, Sections 182.03-F4 and 182.05-S to comply with state law and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending the Norwood Tax Code, Ordinance 1-2018, Sections 182.03-F4 and 182.05-S to comply with state law and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark?
Move to pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sancker?
Yes.
Mr. Breeden?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. The ordinance we removed, we will have no introductory reading of resolutions, ordinance written reports, or other requests for the rest council, so we'll move on to unfinished business. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. I think it was our last regular meeting, as we saw in the notes, sharing out about an invitation to Metro to come present. I did hear back that they are still looking at dates, that they can come. I did receive via email some information about ridership in Norwood, so I will share that out with members of council.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Sancker?
Madam President, just a couple follow-ups to some of the things we discussed earlier. The committee report from the Housing Committee. We discuss these, well, I guess you could call them flippers, that are buying houses, because right now Norwood's housing market is somewhat on the hot side, especially in certain areas, and it's kind of trickling through a number of areas. There are companies that come in and they're buying these houses, they're doing a quick flip on them, they look very nice from the outside and the inside. There are some companies that do an admirable job and should be commended for that. There are others, however, as the one that we found in the report, that basically kind of glued things together and patched it up on the outside, and it looked very good, but to the naked eye it was fine, but until you had it inspected, you found all the discrepancies in the plumbing, the water heaters. So there is just numerous problems that were never inspected and should, that should have been inspected to protect the homeowner and also the future buyer. So, one of the other things we discussed in there is that, keep bringing this up on council floor to make residents aware, if you see anything kind of unusual in your neighborhood, where somebody's gutting a house, there might be a dumpster in the yard, you may not see any permits hanging in the windows for extensive repairs, or you see water heaters coming out and plumbing fixtures coming out. It's not a bad idea just to call the Building Department, report the address. They'll check, run a check to see if there are permits that have been pulled on the properties, and if not, or if so. They'll cruise by to check to make sure that it's inspected prior to these houses being completed and put up for sale. So, it's just a recommendation that we discussed, that residents just be aware, if you see a lot of activity on houses in your neighborhood that you hadn't seen before, call the Building Department and give them the address, and they'll be happy to check it out. What it does, it protects you as a neighbor, and you having new neighbors come in, protect them, but it also protects the people that are doing the work. They get it signed off on and get it inspected, they know they got a good bill and they're on their way. So, just a recommendation, we had talked about, and just, you know, we'll keep mentioning it, anybody has any question, just definitely call the Building Department. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sancker. Good advice. Just a note that Norwood does contract with Hamilton County Public Health for plumbing permits. We haven't had our own plumbing department for a number of years, it's certainly a specialty, and they provide that service to us for fees, the fees that people pay, that doesn't cost the city anything, but very important. So, thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Any other unfinished business? Mr. Sancker?
Yes, Madam President, and just another follow-up on one of the items. We just, we just passed that ordinance, bringing us up to date on parts of House Bill 49. One part of that, which is kind of a money grab by the state again, they put in part of this bill that all the different profits from different companies within your municipality, if you have various locations, you have to send all your profits to the state, and then they'll determine what you get back as a municipality, minus a fee. So, you know, it's kind of a money grab on the state's behalf. It was challenged, and it's still so far, it's been said to have gone through, however, there are some appeals going on that they, on some of the provisions of that particular House bill, but we have to comply at this point in time, because we aren't the state, and if we didn't comply, they would come down on us, but we can't come down on the state. So, just so folks know, it's just another money grab by the State of Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. Sancker. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Mr. Thompson?
I just wanted to announce that next Tuesday, April 3rd, at 7 o'clock, we're going to be holding a Parks Rec Streets and Infrastructure Meeting. The agenda will be forthcoming, but I just wanted to let everybody know that that's going to be happening.
And that'll be here in council?
Here, in council chambers, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any other new business? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you. I may not be able to attend. I may be out of town, my son's on spring break.
That's all right.
Okay.
What for you? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you. I was really glad, oh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to discuss a little bit the Norwood Community Television Funding. I was really glad to see this in the report, saying that the money should go to them, and I think we should work immediately on getting a new ordinance or getting a contract with Pace TV. But I also had some questions, and I apologize if this was talked about at the Finance and Budget Meeting. I did not see that whole meeting. But, can someone explain to me what happened with the Cincinnati Bell payments and how that happened? You know, this was a big error. This wasn't a small error. We have Pace, people have lost jobs there due to finances. You know, we had money that potentially could have been theirs, or could be theirs, that's, I think, left to be decided. And I just want to know what, you know, I'm interested in what happened, and, you know, is there anything we can do to prevent this from happening again? So I'm just wondering if, and maybe Mr. Bonzal has the answers of, you know, how that happened.
Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I won't claim to have all the answers on this. It's our third month on, you know, being on Finance Committee, but really, I would say it's not even a Finance Committee, really, issue. I think that what happened was that in 2010 or 2011, the deregulation of cable TV kind of hit Ohio, where we didn't just have one provider of cable television, more, anybody could provide cable television, and the cities couldn't prevent them from having access. They couldn't give exclusive monopolies anymore. So, Cincinnati Bell, it took them a couple years, but they finally invested in the infrastructure to provide cable television service in the City of Norwood. And so, for many years, it was like 2,000, you know, just a couple years, like $2,000 or $3,000 we'd get, and last year it just jumped significantly to 58,000 dollars. And so, the original contract that we had with Norwood Community Television, or with Pace Telecommunications, from my understanding, it was really focused on the Time Warner Cable dollars. And so, when we started getting these Cincinnati Bell dollars in, I mean, they just, because there wasn't a designation that they needed to go anywhere else, they just went into our general fund, like any other dollars that we would receive as a city if there's not a designation. And so, you know, it is an error in the sense that it would have been nice to have, for this to have been caught earlier, however, it's not that, I don't, there's no contract that we currently have with Pace Telecommunications that we violated by putting that money into the general fund and not into the PACE. And so, you know, like I said, it was, and it just started last year, where we got significant dollars, where it was like $10,000 before, now it's 58. And then another part of the PACE's issues were because, were the merger between Time Warner Cable and Charter that created Spectrum. And so when Spectrum took over, they used to send a check for like 40 or 50% straight to Pace Telecommunications, Norwood Community Television, they would send a percentage of it to us. And then we would keep it, and that other percentage, at the end of the year, if there wasn't any expenses that we had with cable television, which there never are, we would just send the rest to PACE. However, when Spectrum took over, they would only write one check, they wouldn't split it up, so they would only send the check to the City of Norwood, and that's what caused the major issues this year, and that's why it really came to a head this year, because they haven't been getting any money. And so all the checks have been coming to us this year and last year, and so we are now going to start sending those checks to, so as soon as we start getting money from Time Warner Cable or Spectrum, we're going to start sending that immediately over to them. We're not going to hold it to the end of the year anymore, and that's going to help their cash flow. But yeah, back to the other part, I mean, I'm not sure exactly what happened there. I mean, it's something that we all discovered at the same time here, with that letter from PACE, but I would actually agree with you. I think that we do need to work on amending the ordinance to allow, to make sure that what we're going to be doing right now, which is going to be sending that money to PACE, make sure that, I think we should codify it, make sure it continues to happen, so.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, and I, and I do have another question. You know, last year it was 21,000, this year it was 58. Totaled, from 2009, when they started making these franchise fees, it totals 115,000 dollars. How much have we, are we planning on making up to PACE TV out of these funds? I mean, out of the 115,000 that came?
Yeah, in the plan, yeah, thank, thank you very much, Madam President. In the plan, the financial recovery plan that we have right now, we are not making up any payments. It's going to start from the beginning of 2018, and we're going to start giving them the funds now.
Okay, thank you.
I would, I will contact, if it's your desire, I'll contact the law department to see about rejoining some kind of an ordinance. I think it would, it would be cleaner if we did something by ordinance to make sure that the payments go directly to them as soon as they come in.
Yeah, and I did send an email today to Mr. Barlow, Mr. Maloney, Marcus Patterson, and Mr. Stith, and let them know that, you know, it's Finance Committees, the mayors, and the president of council's desire to see any future Cincinnati Bell revenue go into the PACE Fund and not into the general fund. So the treasurer and the auditor's office have been notified about that.
Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Last month, I was sharing that we intend to meet monthly as the Economic Development and Community Engagement Committee. That will not take place in April. We have a couple of things we will be working on, but we will not have a meeting. We had intended to have Metro join us then, and since they're not able to, we're not going to hold the meeting.
Any other new business? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you. I would like to check with the members of the Housing and Health and see if they would be available for a meeting on April the 9th at 6:30, Monday. And that would be to discuss the properties that are, first, the vacant properties in Norwood.
Mr. Breeden, are you in?
Yes, Mr. Breeden and Mr. Sancker. Are you okay with that?
That sounds okay with me. So far.
Okay. I'd like, we have a lot of meetings, so I like to schedule out a little bit if I can, just to give people notice. Okay, thank you.
So is that, should we announce that?
Yes.
Okay, so on Monday, April the 9th at 6:30, Housing, Health and Public Safety Meeting Regarding Vacant Properties, here in council chambers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I would like to ask the Clerk of Council's Office to send a letter to the Treasurer's Office requesting a copy of our depository agreement with US Bank. Be provided to the Finance Committee.
Will you take care of that, Mr. Breeden?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Any other new business? Mr. Sancker?
Question, Madam President. Your next meeting of the Financial Planning Commission, did you say that is April the 4th?
April the 3rd.
3rd.
Tuesday?
Right.
April 3rd?
At 11:30.
At 11:30.